We'll now call the April 10th work sessions in order, please.
No, special meetings.
Special meetings.
Oh, sorry, sorry. Special meeting. First, special session first.
Councilmember Deans.
Here.
Councilmember Havel. Councilmember Hyman.
Present.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Moore. Vice Mayor Ripple.
Here.
Mayor Mottich.
Here.
So far, if I can give a brief explanation to council. A few weeks ago, I sent out an email to council that CDS grants had been canceled under the current administration. We received an email late last week that they reopened the portal for a very short period of time, not even enough days in between council meetings. That's why we're having this special meeting. So we brought forward three CDS updated plans to submit. One is the cancer initiative for the fire departments with some equipment. One is a training facility with the police department. And the other one is a smart city implementation plan. The match required is 25%. We're still working on where we would come up in the budget, but there is funding in the budget to do that. We'll just have to come up with the specific places for it to come from. But according to the ordinance that we wrote, if a match is required, council has to approve it. So we have to have council have a motion for a consideration with a vote so we can apply for these because there is a match required.
So we have money in the budget to do all three of these?
Yeah, so there's only 15 spots open for the entire... What region is that, Shayna? What region are we? For the grants.
For this?
State. Yeah, but this congressman, he only has 15 spots, right?
In the first district? Or, I'm sorry, we're in the second district.
District two. There's only 15 spots for everybody. So we're really hoping we're going to approve for one, but we're going to submit for a... Well, we'd like all three, but again, there's only 15 spots for this year for everybody in that district.
And do we have to rank them in order?
We did. So we were putting a ranking in. The first is the fire department, second is police, third is the smart city.
So the fire department was previously approved and we were instructed to re-admit it.
All right.
Because the 24 CDS grants were canceled.
What was the amount of that?
266.
And now all of them have a 25% match and previous would make it non. Although we did get through for $86,000, but supposedly got $164,000 all about from the 153s and then got the south quarter accepted.
And these are all new programs? These grants are new programs that don't currently exist in the city? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay.
So we requested the cancer initiative.
Right.
Two cycles. And they can't, and we were awarded it, but then we're under pending resolution and we're identified that all of them have been ceased.
Okay.
And advised to re-admit it.
Good, thank you.
So what we're looking for from council is a motion to approve, city to submit these with the corresponding match if they are approved.
In a special meeting?
Because this isn't a work, this is not a work session. 25% required match for all or for each month? That was the new direction, and that direction just came up. We found it yesterday.
Yeah, and a mandate from the beginning of opening.
So our amounts will be $140,000 to $250,000.
Is that for just this one or for all three?
So if you look on the second page, with the piece, on match numbers 140 to 250.
Should we make a motion when we put a special? It is, if you wish. Somebody want to make a motion?
Which one are we starting with?
We want all three.
All three?
Yeah. What, you just need to make the motion to move the agenda item before we discuss it in further.
I move we consider the resubmission of the CDS grants and the approval of the required match therefore.
Second. We have a motion and second discussion. Anybody?
I've got a question for Chief Kiddy. Every time talking to his buddy over there. Chief, Mr. Ripple has a question for you, sir. The old DHR building, did the county buy that for this same type of purpose for training facilities?
They give you some swap training down there. They usually use it for sure.
I just had a new date, that was a discussion at one point in...
I was just learning to do the current change that you have and it's been there since. Mr. Havel, remind me, was 2008, 2009 maybe?
I'll go with that.
And the building is better, I believe, was donated as pretty much a construction trailer. It is getting very dilapidated. You have ice problems, track problems, things. It is pretty...
Blind storage.
We have a nice facility, one of the best in this area. It's all concrete, paved. We're just looking to update the building to make a faster...
So this building we built out there on the range?
Where, I'm sorry, location? The range, okay.
Just a general question about the range. So is it still difficult? I don't want to say difficult to get on our own range, but is it, is it the timing of it with the FBI? Has that been pretty cooperative?
Yes, they let us know several weeks if we're going to use the range. We coordinate with them for any issues. We haven't had any issues.
Okay.
These are rented?
They pay for it.
They paid?
Yeah, they paid for the range.
It was a joint venture, I'm sorry. When they paid for a little bit out there.
Any other questions?
Just kidding. As far as that 140 out of the budget, do we have it there? Is it comfortably there?
And you feel comfortable about $350,000 if all of it was accepted? If all three projects were? I assume it'd be from fiscal year, next fiscal year, right?
Yeah.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Is there any way we can put these? I mean, I hate to motion the table something like this, but...
You can't, you missed the deadline. We have 10 days.
10 days?
That's it.
Because I mean, this should be separate. I think all three of these should be separate items, but that's...
You could amend it.
Yeah, you can amend it to approve them separately, but we are ranking them either way. If council wants to separate, that's fine, but you can't. Unless you don't want to apply for the grants, that's fine, then council doesn't have to vote on them. But we've given such a short window.
Okay.
We had to get a proposal from council. We were under the impression this wasn't actually going to come back to fall, and then all of a sudden we got an email saying, here's your window, please apply.
So let me ask this then. You know, where is this coming out of the budget at? If we are for the match, where's the match coming?
Well, there's funds in the budget, but we are looking at where we would take it from next year because we were given such short amount of time to get this done. We worked, these just got done this afternoon.
Okay. So we don't really know just yet?
But we previously applied four grants, other ones that were canceled, that had funds in the budget that were, cost more than these matches. But that was in this year's budget. So we would just find that money which would exist in next year's budget to fund these.
Does City Hall pay it off by next year?
It's paid out this year.
Yes.
October of this year? October of this year.
You don't think these would ever, another opportunity like this will come up again?
Well, there should be CDS every year, but I would encourage council not to miss a year. Now, again, there's 15 spots for the entire district. The chances of us getting, in my opinion, more than one is probably not going to happen, but we should submit to see what moves forward. Now, if council wants to shorten down to do, I would suggest the firefighters and the fire district police do those two, and we can do the smart city implementation next year. However, all the road construction is going on right now. What does it cost when you're doing smart city initiatives? Is the tearing up of the roads? We don't have to do that because it's already been torn up and repaid. That's why we put this in because it saves about 75% of the cost.
Got a question, tip my time, but...
I don't know.
Kim, what's the monthly payment?
It's quarterly.
What's the same one?
Quarterly.
Okay, quarterly.
Why, it makes them pay it off.
What people use that money?
The money's already in the budget. The budget you guys approved, that money's already reallocated.
It's reallocated to the fire trucks.
Yeah.
Never mind.
So just one more question. So if, say if we're miraculously approved for all three of these grants and we can't find the funding?
You would debt finance one of them, and I would suggest the police building. Because a 75-25 match, that's still a significant contribution from another level of government that I would suggest council not pass up. And they are in dire need of a place in that building. I've been in that building. It needs to something sweetened up.
Would the opioid funds be an eligible expense for this one?
No.
No?
Which one?
Uh, the police.
Any more discussion?
On all of them or just this one?
What, I thought we did all three of them?
Oh, I'm sorry. I was late.
Well, why couldn't we use the opioid funds for the cancer prevention wellness program? Because our fire department runs basically out there. They're out there running all the time, and why wouldn't we be able to use that on this?
It's not directly linked to opioid use. Like the MOU is very specific.
Police having a building where they can do training for response to those in addiction from, or overdose? That's not a way to time?
I mean, that's not really what we're using for now.
Okay.
You could probably do a small percentage if you wanted to break out the percentage.
I mean...
But again, that discussion could come if it was approved. Right now, we're just asking permission to submit.
All right, so, so let's just say we submit all three. We get all three, but we end up, we end up deciding we don't want to debt finance one. Can we just reject it?
I don't know the parameters on this program. We only got approved two last time when it was a full CDS program. So again, the chances are pretty slim of getting all three when you have 15 for the entire district.
So what is a full CDS program? Like how many grants?
Well, they used to fund nonprofits. Now they're not even funding nonprofits.
Just government expenses.
Okay. Is it germane?
Is it, uh, is it germane to amend the motion from here on out? Is that, would that be okay, Madam Clark?
Yeah.
Okay. I'd like to amend the motion on the, on the floor here to include the matching funds for the Clark'sburg Police Department Training Facility in the amount of a hundred and forty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. And the firefighter cancer prevention and wellness program for matching funds for seventy-one thousand, five hundred dollars only.
I'll second that.
What, what is that, Will?
I'd just like to, instead of doing all three, I'd like to do the two that seem to have a little bit more priority, in my opinion.
The police and fire.
Police and fire and then pass on the, on the smart city implementation plan for now, maybe revisit it at a later time.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Well, next year.
As I am funding here.
Okay, so council's aware, if you put off that smart city, that won't even come back to council because I would never recommend to council to go and tear up our nearly eight roads downtown. Cause that is against everything I've talked to this council for a little bit the last two years.
Yeah, I just, I think our priorities. In regards to public safety, I mean, I understand that there's a little bit of public safety in the, in the smart city aspect of it. I just, you know, I could say a couple of things, I just won't.
That fund that council created for economic development from the VNO taxes, it could be funded out of those funds. So it wouldn't be taken from the budget where these other monies would be coming from.
Okay, we have.
The, the, the question I have on, on the smart city implementation plan, implementation plan. So the tearing up the streets, is that, I'm trying to catch up to this, but that'd be primarily for installation of fiber? Is that, is that totally what it is?
Pretty much, yeah.
So I would recommend regardless of this passes or not passing, that maybe contact, um, the fiber networks, you know, City, you know, CityNet Frontier, all of them and let them know, you know, the streets are open.
We have.
Start installing, cause it's, cause you know, there wasn't the agreement with CityNet to, to any right of ways opened in the city that they would have the right to lay the conduit and, and pull the fiber for future, so.
We had that meeting about a year and a half ago with all the internet companies. I've also asked Jason Lane right now to talk to Thrasher about the city ourselves laying conduit just in case for future use while it's, it's opened. But this was a good way to get a contribution from other levels of government to do that as well. We don't really get that opportunity when the roads are all torn up or we can install this type of infrastructure at a significantly less cost, significant less cost than we thought it would be.
I would, I would definitely agree with going forward with putting conduit in the ground for future and just put a pull, pull line in.
Yeah, Thrasher's getting us a call.
I would definitely recommend that.
Maybe six weeks ago about doing that too.
Charge your, your taxes.
So let us, if we were to lay the conduit now, we have a rough estimate on costs and those will be a cost to us now.
We've asked for a quote from Thrasher. We're still waiting to get that in. If, if council doesn't want to do this, what I'm probably going to come back to council and ask is if we can pay for the conduit with tip district funds because it's infrastructure. So again, if, if council doesn't want to go forward with the smart city implementation, that, that's fine as well. I will come back with another plan to lay that conduit because an opportunity, like I said, to have the roads all torn up doesn't come along very often.
Would, would the, would the smart, would the smart city plan, like, could we use tip funds for that? Is this not infrastructure?
The infrastructure part we could.
Which is how much?
That's what I was, um, we could use tip funds. We could also use the economic development above one million dollar project fund council has created as well.
You could also use the sales and use tax fund, infrastructure.
Infrastructure. The question is, if council just wants to do the conduit, then if you, if council's priorities police and fire, then just approve the police and fire and hopefully we get one or both of those. And we'll move forward with simply the putting the power behind the grounds.
So looking at the total project costs, like, so, uh, the smart city, our match would be a hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred. How, how much of, how much of that cost is infrastructure that could be, that tip funds could be used to cover that money?
I, I apologize, we've had, this is now.
I, I, I got, I, I know we're working on a timeline.
I don't know. I can't give council that answer.
I would support installing the conduit, you know, and just prioritizing the police and, police and fire department portion of these. Um, and the reason why is, is because we don't even know if we're, if this smart city grant, we're, we're even going to be approved for it. So while we have the roads already open, you know, maybe, maybe that might be, you know, that might be better. Because if we just, if we just don't put the conduit in, we wait on this grant and we don't get it, then just kind of.
That's a good point.
Just kind of defeating the focus.
Cause you can't totally work ahead of time like you said anyway. Okay.
Okay, we have a motion.
How many, how many feet of conduit would we, would it be?
To make the entire loop from Chestnut Street all the way through is a little over five thousand feet. To make a loop up to Lake Main and back to itself. That's just, that's, that's five thousand foot, that's not counting any of the what's called handholds, the junction boxes.
Yeah.
That, uh, my disposal would be during the construction right now to stub out into the side city streets and then did block to get, get one of those handholds into the sidewalk to allow the expansion of that parallel to the main roads in, under the sidewalks.
So for the broadband committee here, vice mayor.
Anybody else? Okay, we have a motion and a second on Councilman Hammond for the police and firefighter. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Now back to the original motion, right? Do we have, do we have a, did we have a motion and a second? All right, on the original, we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Yeah, just as, I was saying, like, if those two were just approved on the amendment, was it just a new point just to vote on the, the original or? I mean, I don't know. Might as well ask some paramontarian over there.
I'm just writing it up as a motion to approve firefighter cancer screen and police.
Okay.
And leave that to the. Yeah, that's all.
Okay. Yeah.
That's a.
All right, so now we're going to adjourn from the.
Go to adjourn, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Okay, so, yeah. Well, those guys could be the guilty anyway, they don't.
We were here.
And we're here.
Thank God we're here, you wouldn't have got through that.
I didn't say.
Okay, so we're now open the special works session for April the tenth, twenty twenty-five.
Roll with taken previously with all council members present. Pierce and police present.
Thank you. We're going to call for Travis Teetz, please, to podium and speak, please, or however he wants to address.
I'm getting behind, podium line off. Ladies and gentlemen, thank you for inviting me down here today. I had a pleasant meeting with, um, with Ms. Phil, Chief Kitty, and also Lieutenant Swire about our program. So I'm a police and Pierce coordinator for West Virginia Silver Living Solutions. Our program is based out of, it was originally a federal grant from SAMSA offered to the West Virginia Office of Drug Control Policy. They are our grantor. We were the sole grantees that received this grant for a matter of four years. And the design of this program is to embed a state certified PRSS or peer recovery support specialists within law enforcement divisions across the state. If you've ever heard of lead programs, angel initiatives with the state police, we operate similar to that. We are a pre-arrest diversion program mainly focused on trying to reduce the burden on law enforcement. So we know all first responders and that goes as far as, you know, the firefighters, EMS workers, they're the front line. They get to see overdoses and erratic behavior and substance misuse on a weekly or daily basis. So we want to try to provide a outlet for those people that are first responders to have a peer that's knowledgeable about the resources in the state, that can bring an avenue of recovery and divert them away from criminal justice mainly to save the taxpayers some money and, uh, provide that person with a recovery pathway that's beneficial for them and the community. Uh, this is, we started in Fayetteville, so Tyson Kincaid's picture here was the first pier that we placed in the Fayetteville Police Department. That's basically how we've operated this program. We're in six counties right now, so we're in Mon, Preston, um, Canal County, Nicholas County, Fayette County, and now in Raleigh County. So I'm just now getting Beckley City Police started up, but we'll plant one pier inside of a police department in a smaller jurisdiction. We've aimed kind of at hotspots for, um, substance misuse and then we'll just show that it works. So that police department has the pier readily available to them. They start to show an impact in the community and then the other jurisdictions around there typically have been, Tyson has twelve different jurisdictions right now. Um, in Charleston, we started out with Nitro PD. We were in St. Albans working in, to get in Dunbar. We have a proof of concept model, so we show that it works and then other police departments can see that and then decide to sign on with us. This is federally funded initiative through SAMSA. It goes till twenty twenty-six where we're hoping to have that renewed for another four-year term. This is no cost to the jurisdiction, so as you guys were just talking about, which is always interesting to see how, you know, the wheels of cities like this move along. We're free, we're basically just an MOU, an agreement between West Virginia Silver Living Solutions and the police departments that we embed the pier in. Our diversion programs, uh, they prove to reduce recidivism, uh, the likelihood of repeating criminal offenses. They can renew, reduce the numbers of base spent in jail, hospitals, um, you know, and then the, the major cost is the, the criminal system. So once we're public defenders, judges, setting arraignment dates and hearings down the road, that takes a lot of time and money. If we can get that person that might have a simple possession charge or trespassing to agree to go to treatment, let their medical insurance cover it, now we know they have at least thirty days of some beneficial help. They might come out of that and, you know, have a long-term, uh, stay in sobriety. How the program works, um, we're, we're aiming to get, so we need, we need law enforcement to tell us who these people are. You know, we do a lot of outreach and we'll go out with a backpack and try to meet people, but most of the time when a crisis situation comes up, law enforcement are the ones that get called. So if they can alert us who that person is and what's going on, if it's substance use related or mental health related, we get called to the scene and then we can try to provide them resources to get, you know, placed into a quality treatment plan. We do have the ability to transport. We do have the ability to transport people, so that would look like the officer decides that this is a case that they think we would be effective. We come to the scene, we do a quick, um, you know, data collection from that person. We make sure that they have medical insurance. If they don't, we get them presumptive coverage on the spot and then we can take them to a medical facility or a treatment facility from there. Uh, we target the root causes of most of the, the criminal activity, so, you know, the copper wire situation I overheard coming in. I would bet you all the, you know, riches in my wallet that it's probably based out of a substance-related incident. Somewhere along the line, that's going to be funded, you know, to ingest some kind of narcotic down the road. If we can stop that, it benefits our community, so. Uh, the things that we're mainly a focus, that's the substance use disorder, food and housing insecurities, lack of educational resources, unmet mental health needs. When we come to approach substance use, mental health, we try to do it with, you know, the eight dimensions of wellness. So we want to provide all the things that a person can need. We're not just trying to get someone into treatment and walk away from it. We stay with their clientele for a year, up to two years and make sure that they have all the supportive services that they could need to continue a pathway of recovery. Connections to quality treatment, education, counseling resources, helps to job skills, uh, connections to housing and food resources. Like I said, we try to provide full wraparound services and a continuum of care to our clients. The goal is to reduce the workload of first responders, allow officers and community members to see positive outcomes for people with substance use disorder, reduce repeat incarceration in individuals committing drug-related offenses, improve community relations, easily pursue alternatives to incarceration and minor drug-related offenses. Here's a quick overview of three months of last year that we had in all five of the counties that we were active in. So the black line is our new clients, so we just met that, that person in that three-month window. The, uh, kind of dark orange line is referrals to services not substance use related. The orange line is referrals to S U D treatment and the yellow line is connections to treatment. You can see with that data, we're getting at least thirty to forty people. So consider ten people with the city of Clarksburg every month that might get a, receive a service that they probably wouldn't have ordinarily without our intervention. I know the next one is connections to treatment and, uh, interactions, or interactions, connections to treatment, substance use related. We have over a hundred and seventy-five across five counties in a three-month window. That's October to December thirty-first of last year. And if we can connect over a hundred and five people to a treatment service, there's a hundred and five people in the state of West Virginia that might be better off thirty days from now. Some of those are long-term, so they could stay for six months or a year. And then there's contact information. That's basically how this program works. We get with law enforcement, we share our cards, we start to communicate and build relationships in the community. We want to work with, uh, you know, the justice system, with drug court, with probation officers, home confinement officers, anyone that's got a client that could use our services, we'll try to help them with it. But that's basically how we operate is building relationships. And what I would like to do, I've been trying for three and a half years now to work myself out of a job. I can't seem to do it. Uh, the opioid crisis is, is here, it's staying. No matter how many people I can get into treatment, there's two or three people that are going to start using tomorrow and I'm going to aim for them next. But my goal with this is city of Clarksburg, I'd love to show you, you know, how a pier in, inside the police department can work. And then a year from now, you guys take it away, you know? I want to leave with you not needing me, but if you did, you have a model of a program that's effective and it helps first responders mostly, uh, but the, the citizens of the communities we all live in. So that's basically, you know, I know we've got live music events and things to get to, so I'll wrap it up with that.
Take your time.
That's an over, overview of the program and, and I'll feel free to ask questions. I'll try to answer them the best of my ability.
Just have a little question for you. Do, do you also work and coordinate with first services that does eight four four number and the, cause, cause they, they have something similar to what you all, what you all are doing? I mean, and they have, they have mental health crisis and, you know, I guess substance use. I don't know if it's, it's a pier or if it's a social worker, they have them embedded in, in Wheeling Police Department and, and one in Fayetteville, I think. You, you guys work within that much too?
Yeah, so Lotta and West Virginia First Foundation, they do have a program that's almost named identical to ours. It came through the same office with the West Virginia. almost named identical to ours. It came through the same office with the West Virginia Office of Drug Control, and my coordinator there was Jocelyn Holmes. He had to have her change the name of the program because it was too similar to ours. They are almost mirror programs. So, I've met the chief from Wheeling, and their peers are on-call, so that's where we kind of differ, is someone's on-call 24 hours a day, and they supply them with like a decommissioned police cruiser. They're more like, they're more associated with the department themselves. We don't show that much risk to the, you know, the city attorney can look over the MOU and say there's not much. We carry our own insurance. We try to minimize the risk that the cities might encounter.
So, counsel, the vehicle, the employee, the insurance is all managed and associated to peers in police, and they're here Monday through Friday for an eight-hour day, and Chief Kitty is very much in support of this program, as am I. In addition to that, when we go on to the West Virginia First Foundation, the recommendation's going to be with that funding that we have a person three nights a week and weekends, so we're getting additional coverage at other hours in the city. But this, we believe this would be a great addition to help work, work through the addiction crisis that we're facing.
I mean, I think it's a start, but you're, you're, you know, I think what you, what the target should be is that, you know, I mean, I don't think, you know, substance use just, you know, occurs between 8:30 and 4:30 PM.
Unfortunately, that's their hours, and I agree, it's a start, but that, that's what they're going to offer. That's what they do, they need regular business hours.
Question. Travis, do you have, do you all have to get any kind of permission from the prosecuting attorney's office or anything like that from the courts in order to do diversion for individuals who've offended?
Not necessarily. When we have this established with the police department, it's, it's on each officer to make that call. So, you can hold charges in abatement and say, "We will prosecute this down the road if you don't complete treatment." And for me, I like having a little bit of weight holding over clients, but at the same time, it can be a voluntary, you know, decision to go to treatment, and that way, they would just dismiss the charges, so they don't have to bind up the, the justice system.
And the program is fully federally funded through you all, West Virginia Sober Living, and I guess West Virginia First Foundation?
Yeah, so SAMSA came with the grant, and then they issued it to the West Virginia Drug Control Policy, and then they gave up. We were the, the winner of the grant. So, for the last three years, I've been operating this program and across the state, but it's fully funded by them.
And remind us again what it would cost the city of Clarksburg?
Zero dollars.
Thank you.
You believe four years ago, when you guys awarded that grant, that you have exceeded expectations and you expect it to be awarded again?
By far, yeah.
So, the MOU and agreement, it's a one-year agreement, is that?
It doesn't have a timeframe on it. I'm just saying the, the end of the grant cycle will be September of 2026, so that would be when that grant cycle would run over, but we would try to renew that grant.
Well, you mentioned one year, so I didn't know if, like, if it's successful, would you continue with that program here?
Oh, yeah. We, yeah, for as long as you guys want to work with us.
He was just using one year to us as metrics for us, like, after a year.
Yeah. Well, if you wanted something that was 24 hours a day, seven days a week, that might be, you could model it off of the program that's already started and hire a peer yourself with a social worker. That's, Morgantown Police Department started their own special service unit, which has Kelly Rice, the social worker, and two officers are dedicated to that. So, my peer with this program goes out on outreach with them every day for amount of time. He gets calls for mental health crises all over Morgantown. We'll go just about anywhere, but we also recognize that a lot of this activity is between 10:00 PM and 4:00 AM. So, we've got a database where they can do a third-party referral, that we will at least know who they are and that the incident took place the following morning. So, operate sort of like a quick response team, where we'll respond to it within 72 hours. Any other questions?
How, how, are the individuals treated if they're repeat? Like, if, if the officer encounters the same individual twice a month apart?
We honestly just can't give up on anybody. I know someone that went to treatment 14 times. They got it on the 14th, but they had to get there 13 before that, so we just don't give up. It, it becomes, that's where the burnout comes in. So, EMS workers, first responders, they're tired of seeing that same client over and over again. They won't change their ways. If a peer can get in with them, a lot of times, we've had success in navigating them towards a quality treatment program and sustaining that treatment for at least a year. That's their big goal, is getting someone in 12 months. Your likelihood of staying clean after that, much higher. You get to two years, even higher, five years higher, but we want to stay, stay with our clients, and it might take 10 times for somebody, but we'll just keep trying.
Thank you, Mr. Chief.
Thank you, guys.
Yes, sir. Number two.
So, counsel, I handed out the emails from the West Virginia First Foundation. One is a partial approval for our application for the city with embedded liaison in the police department. One is the denial on the Resco application. So, we'd like counsel to have a discussion. We will need to match more than 10% of what we initially thought because they awarded us just over $37,000. So, with the salary benefits and the equipment, it's probably going to be a 50% match for this year. It will go down for the year after. And then, we'd like counsel to discuss what, what's the hours you'd like this person to be on, like nine hours, three nights a week and the weekends to complement hopefully the peers and police that counsel will allow us to bring to the city and vote on the next council meeting as well. So, just want your feedback on how you'd like to model that program, because it's slightly different. We asked for two individuals to be, we got, it looks like the base salary, very base salary for one, is how it appears. That's what we received.
I mean, I, I think if, if we're going to work with the, the peers in police, folks of West Virginia Sober Living, and, and they, and they're going to be, you know, working during the day, I think maybe it just might be a little more advantageous to have, you know, our person, you know, mainly working, you know, working evenings, nights, whatever it may be, i- if that's, you know, if that's something possible.
Can we, sorry, go ahead.
I mean, and then my other question is, I mean, is this person, is they going to be a social worker, or going to be a peer, or going to be a, you know, mental?
Counsel needs to direct us.
Crisis worker, whatever, I mean.
Or is that something you would like to, because that person will be under Chief Kitty. Is that something you want to, to leave for Chief Kitty to decide what he believes is going to work best?
And I, I think, you know, just me personally, I mean, I am a licensed social worker, but I think there has to be a balance between both. You can't, you just can't have just someone who's, you can't, you can't, you know, put all your eggs in, in the whole professional basket because they may not work well with the police department. But at the same time, you, you just can't have someone that, you know, just maybe been clean for three years, you know, you know, in recovery, just trying to mitigate, you know, all this too. So, I think, yeah, lead it. I, I think it should be a conversation, you know, between you and the chief, you know, to see what kind of person would be a perfect fit. Because I mean, I, I would imagine that these folks are probably going to do, this person's probably going to do ride-alongs. They're going to be embedded in the police department. There's, there's going to have to be a lot of rapport building, I think, you know, amongst, you know, amongst professionals, you know, and employees with the police department with this person, so.
I think, I mean, I believe it might be beneficial if they were to work together early on, first few months to build the police, to work together with this program, and then start maybe operating at night at that point. Chief Kitty, do you think that would be beneficial for them to work together early on with this, you know, and then kind of build their plan moving?
The biggest problem we've had over the past couple of years of talking about this is all the services. Nobody ever wants to work together. This one doesn't like this service. This one doesn't like that one either. And that's always been a big issue. I've talked to Mr. Teetz, and, you know, he's, he does not appear that their programs, on trial tape, they're going to be the only program. They're going to work with somebody. We, you know, unfortunately, they only have certain hours to work. That's their, what they do. We do want somebody that might, somebody that's flexible, you know, somebody that might work some days, some evenings, depending on what they have to do. And talking to Mr. Teetz, I don't think that would be a problem than working in conjunction with him. Now, if it ends up it doesn't work that way, like he, like Mr. Teetz said, there's a MOU, but nothing in the MOU says, hey, we don't like them, we can't. We don't have to. In six months, if it ain't working out, we just talk, find something else. We got to try something. We keep talking about this, nothing ever gets tried, so at least we're trying something.
And, you know, I, I think that, you know, we've been talking about bringing a social worker on for some time now, and, you know, I think now to try to turn it into some sort of a hybrid, you know, we would be dropping the ball right there. You know, we already have, you know, a program who's willing to bring a peer recovery support specialist in, and now a social worker in. You know, I've talked to Mayor Knowles out of Martinsburg, and he's told me personally on numerous occasions, he started out with one social worker. He now has four social workers in his department because it worked so well. So, you know, why water it down? Why not bring in someone who has the training and the experience, and let's see where it goes from there? I mean, we have a peer recovery support specialist that we can already bring into the department, you know, and so a social worker, someone who's trained, you know, completely to do the job. I, I think that, you know, we, we don't need to water this down. We need to go ahead and move forward to do what we can to try to, you know, get these streets straightened up.
So, this employee would be reporting directly to you. He would be under, or she would be under your complete control. Okay, just making sure.
Basically, they don't have, they have room for a desk for them, but, yeah, they, they can come in and meet with people that want, mainly they'll be out on the street. If there's plenty of people that want to come to the police board and talk to them.
What do you think would be the best type of employee, or, or I guess credential employee for you in coordination with?
They should have some experience in, you know, social service, but honestly, I would also like to have somebody that's past issues, that they've been there. They have lived in work. It's easier for them to talk to somebody that has an addiction problem when they fought those themselves. They know what they're about.
You, you may find that with a licensed social worker, you know, I mean, maybe not.
A licensed social worker, social service, that's how they start out. That's why they get into that field, to help them. I've also spoken to a, who's called First Choices, and I'll be sending a couple officers training with them. They also do kind of the same thing, but that's another organization that we can get in here, you know? There's plenty of work for all of them. We just got to get the one guy out.
Chief, as far as days and hours, you know what days, you know what hours, what would you recommend as far as, you know, days and hours that are peak time for having someone like this one board?
I wish I could tell you.
I think it would be.
I've seen people in the morning, midnight.
Yeah.
You know, midnight on, they're not out on the streets that much, places, you know, laying down some work, but, you know, evening times, late at midnight is usually the prime time.
Maybe we should ask the chief to come up with a job description and maybe send it to, you know, if we could maybe take a look at it?
Yeah, so, my thought was on the next agenda, we'll have the, the numbers written out for what we would like from the opioid funds, because counsel will have to approve that, and then, then we can move forward with, I would encourage counsel not to get involved in job descriptions.
Well, that, that's not what I meant. I mean, I was, like, like I said, we could have the chief create a job description, give it to you and us for, to evaluate, and then, you know, if they're safe. Yeah, second.
Hi.
Oh, yeah, well, you know.
Maybe Councilman Warden Jackson would go into this. What do you think the likelihood is, and I agree, that was, those are the nighttime hours, and we get probably the most beneficial. Do you believe it's going to be something for us to find somebody for that those late hours?
I mean, it could be. I mean, it depends on the salary too.
And we recognize that the salary's probably going to have to be a bit higher because the shifts are going to be like four to midnight or later afternoon evening on the weekends. So, that's something why we would bring the financials back to counsel to approve first. But at least we're getting more coverage with the peers in police and then this employee on top of that. We're getting more coverage than we have now.
Yeah, and I'm going to highly recommend, when you make a job description, that you do get ahold of LADA with the, with CEO for First Choice, First Choices. I think she, she does trainings. She has, they, they've even developed a job description for, for this position to be embedded in law enforcement, and, and that, and I have her card in my car. Do, do you have her number, chief, or?
No.
Okay. I could get that to you after the meeting, so, because I think, I think, you know, partnering with her, you know, will also help you find that right person, especially if, if she's helped the city of Wheeling, you know, create their job description, you know, for this position embedded in law enforcement, so.
We might go, partner with them on the salary stuff.
Right.
Get, I mean, I'm not sure. It's just going to be hard to get somebody.
Yeah.
Especially when they know it's only one year, you might not get it.
And we could probably kick in some of our opioid funds too.
That's what I'm, I'm saying that we're actually going to do this. The salary will be higher than 30 cents. Otherwise, we won't get, in my opinion, quality applicants that will work those shifts.
Right.
Which it just won't happen.
Right, you're right.
Discussion regarding the step Emily Drive.
Sorry, apologies, counsel. It's not Emily Drive. That's a misprint on my part, but I didn't see photos from the Department of Highways where this step is happening. They just wanted to make counsel there and, and also ask that the public, if they see crews out working on lights, to see something, say something, call it in, so our police can go by and see if they have a license to be doing the work at those locations.
I spoke with Earl Gaskin, probably two months ago now, and he was sending Mr. Charleston, and I, you know, he never got back to me, but obviously, it's more than right there at Joy Street, you know, it's going into Adamston and down 19.
Four and a half weeks.
I'm sorry?
Took us four and a half weeks.
Better than CSX.
I know the lights, the lights on 50 from Pike Street to Wilshireburg have been out for months. I mean, I mean, that's.
There's issues in Adamston, off, like, schools, around the weather.
Yeah, it seemed like to me that the only lights that were still working were the lights at the on-ramps and off-ramps, but everything along 50 was completely out, which these pictures maybe it's pointing at, huh?
This is the only other portion of the road.
Yeah, unfortunately.
It look, it looks like there are hidden areas where nobody can see it.
Yeah.
Obviously.
The lights.
I'd rather not put it out.
Yeah.
You just got to, that plastic, plastic.
It's just for cases.
They are working on a solution.
They have, the Division of Highways has a chain of order in hand that has not been approved yet to have a solution, as to repairing the corrective action to travel in the future.
Number five, discussion regarding the bearing of object prevention and protection program.
So, counsel, I need to be able to. So, council, I made you the presentation, the information, um, last week, asked you to review it, I'm just looking for some direction, um, on whether to move forward. As I have already told you, most of the programs we have in the city cover what that program covers, and in regards to our spending accounts, if we ever, uh, move forward with that with one of our current providers, then we have to cancel this program. Just looking for some direction. Did talk to a number of staff who read the presentation, there doesn't seem to be, um, a lot of interest yet, but if, if the meetings happen later, there would be more interest and just keep in mind the potential impact when, uh, people retire into taxes and that type of thing.
I, I recommend that we, we should at least offer it to our employees, cause there may be, you know, cause, cause when I, when I look through it, it's a, you know, it's, it's a free service to, to employees, you know, it could be life insurance, could be, you know, um, short-term disability, whatever, um, it does come out of, it does come out of their, their like a tax to pay for that. You know, now, if you're probably an employee that already, maybe already got your quarters in, um, this right here may be something that you would want to do, you know, cause it would be free. Um, if you were, you know, maybe someone that was in their twenties, you know, maybe you would, maybe you wouldn't, you know, cause that may have some implications down the road when it comes to social security. But it is, it is a free service, plus, I, you know, I mean, the people, you know, the folks that, you know, will, that would want to, you know, want to, um, you know, have this, uh, this program, it would also save the city money, too, on that. So, I mean, that's, I, I think it should at least be, we should at least introduce it and it should at least be offered at the city.
Do you want me to offer it, or do you want me to go around and see if a certain percentage are interested before actually implementing it?
Well, I mean, I, I think.
Because there is, there is implications of implementing it, and then if our existing programs changes, there's issues on that as well.
Well, I mean, I, I don't know what the implications on the existing programs are. I, I, I just think if, if you go around and try to do a sample size of like all the employees of the city, say, would you support this, would you not? I mean, I, I mean, I, I would at least like, you know, I mean, we may not have all the answers to this, but maybe our rep would, you see? Maybe there at least needs to be a presentation, you know, by the rep, you know, to say, hey, this is, this is what we can offer and stuff to the city employees, not just the city council.
Is it all or none? I mean, is that how it is? Everybody's gotta be on board, or?
No, it's the same as other programs, there's an open enrollment, but let's say six months and you decide you don't want to participate, you can't leave, you have to wait till the open enrollment comes around again. Um, so once you sign up, that's basically, you're, you're in there for a year. Um, there is a cost to the city, as was in that presentation for certain departments, so it's not free to the city, so there can, there can be that cost in budget time as well. So I believe council should consider that. I, if, it's really, I, if council wants me to do it, I will do it.
I, how, I, you know, is our, is the current program working for our employees?
Yes. We have no complaints.
Okay. And what is the cost of the program from bearing out?
So which depart, there's two departments that have to, we have, would be police and fire, where the city actually has to pay annually, is that accurate?
Yes, because they would get their fee from those that participate from the other department. So they said it could even itself out, if possible.
It may even itself out.
It may cost us what?
I believe it's, I wanna say.
Is it six hundred and sixty a person?
Per month, right?
Per?
No, not six sixty per month, per person. I thought it was sixty per month.
Okay.
So worst case scenario, not, can we get that number? I mean, not right now, but like, you know, you said, could they balance out, but like?
You, you, you don't know until who signs up and who doesn't sign up.
They would have to meet with every employee, and then, before then, they have to have all of their information, their salary, their tax status, and all that. Probably keep a meeting with them, so they can calculate what they, just how they reach.
Can you remind me, I'm sorry, Kim, can you remind me of the existing program? I heard Aflac, or there was other ones?
Yeah, we have Aflac, Colonial, um, what's the other one? Guardian.
Guardian. Do those see a lot of participation? I mean, do, do they see a lot in the city? Okay. Well, it seems like there's a wide array, I mean, I'm sure they all, they'll offer different services.
It seems like there's a lot of cities getting off board.
There is.
There's a kind of board of decisions, though.
I'm sure they've done their due diligence.
Well, yeah, and, and I spoke to John again, and, and he, he sent me some items, but I mean, I, I don't see the downfall, I, I still don't, even getting clarifications from him, you know, on this, but, you know, and I, and I, my understanding was, I believe they, they met with. Just recently, like, af- after the council meeting?
Yes.
Yes, okay, all right. So I think in his mind, I, I think they were anticipating moving forward with, with the program. Um, you know, I, I, I'm still in favor of the program. I, I, I don't see the negative to it.
Is council in agreement?
Where, where does it, does, does it compare to the existing services that we have? I mean, is it like as far as cost go across the board, or?
It does, I mean, yeah.
Yeah, so, I mean, and, and you don't have to, for example, if I don't want Aflac, if I were, you know, I, I don't have to do that, and if I don't want this, I don't have to do that either, and, I mean, so, I mean, it seems like we have plenty of options, I don't see why it would hurt to add another one, but, I mean, if it's cost prohibitive, too, that's gonna be a problem, but, doesn't sound like it is, but.
I mean, it's just one more, one more opportunity for our employees.
We can offer it, if they sign up, they sign up, if they don't sign up, they don't sign up. Um, those meetings, if staff want to have those meetings and, and get to know the program, that's all voluntary, we're not gonna force anybody into the meetings, so.
They, they do have to meet with every employee if you sign up.
They have to meet with every, hold up, individually?
Yes.
Why?
To get, to tell them about the program and tell them what their individual costs would be.
And that's only for the people who sign up, or just?
That's the entire organization.
Individually?
Yes.
That's interesting.
Governmental rule, is that something that?
They can't go by department, or?
We have to do it.
They can't go by department? Like, they can't sit down with an entire department and talk about it?
No, because.
Oh, I see.
It's based on their income and individual tax status.
Yeah, I mean, that's, the, yeah, oh, yeah, they're all in charge. I was just saying, we do that at the school boards for our section one twenty-five insurance, we have to meet every year individually.
Hmm, yeah.
Wow. I did not realize that, I thought it was once they, we said yes, that if staff wanted to, they could meet with them if they were interested.
We thought that, too, but we made sure I asked.
Yeah, I, that was my understanding, okay, wow.
When's our next open enrollment?
It's happening now.
Right now, oh.
Yeah, we just had P E I meetings, um, for all the staff in council chambers, but in groups.
Does this program run July one to June thirtieth, or is it, is it the calendar year?
Yeah, and typically, I would just assume we get started only once, and so we would do July one. I think it's the same, but I don't see any people today.
So if it's a new program, it doesn't have to be started during our open enrollment? If we started, like, you know, if I get hired at a different time, I can still join then? But is that a, would that work for the same new program?
I don't think it asks you, we can under our performance, but you have to know, but
If we adopted the program, they would start an open enrollment?
Yeah.
I think we should meet with Baron again and find out, because, you know, um, I'm not comfortable with the fact that, you know, if we decide this is something we want to offer, then all of the employees have to be pigeonholed into coming in and sitting down and talking to them. If, if it's just a talk, and they can come in and say, I'm not interested, that's one thing, but if they have to come in and give them their personal information and things like that, I don't think that's fair to, uh.
For the meeting, we have to provide the entire city workforce's financials, basically your salary range, and they'll take it back, it's two, three days according to the report that they gave us, to go through that, and then they'll, they'll arrive from that information and fix the number that you, as, as an employee, might be eligible if you explore that program. So if you sit down, they're, and they're gonna tell you, okay, you have X amount of dollars, you might as well be able to get everything, the program, for free, you might, you know, but that's, we have to give them all this information upfront, so we've got to collectively, uh, we all have to give them names, we're gonna use employee numbers, that way they don't have, um, somebody's name out there with all their financials as well. But they want all this information to cover their blind senses prior to being prepared to, to meet with each candidate, because they, they wanna know, in order to meet with you, they gotta know what your allotment's gonna be, what you can use.
Do our other plans also require these meetings on a yearly basis?
They don't require them to meet, but they just offer it. We usually have them for regional meetings once a year, just so people know what their plans are, what they have, but they don't require.
Okay.
But we don't know why this one you have to, even everybody knows you don't?
I think you would be, we're, we have a lot of problems to not do with everyone, because, and they need to be individually, because their allotments, like Steve said, are all different based on your salary. So they have to be able to explain exactly what they can do and how much they can spend on what's.
But if, if, if my memory is right, Colonial Life meets with them individually as well when they sign up, to, to make sure what they're getting and, and the employee understands what they're gonna be receiving, cause it, it could differ as well.
They don't have to meet with them, like we offer them.
Right, right, right.
There is one difference in the Life Insurance, most of the policies in the city participating are counted in short. This one is a whole life plan, but it is a little bit different in that respect, you call it the Life Insurance side, but the, the financials, they, they sort of aren't mandatory prior to meeting with each individual, because otherwise, it takes normally a couple days for you to, your income to do this form of, so that they know what your allotment might be.
But, but the major difference, too, in rating this, I, I believe, is when, when you, when the employee purchased the product from another provider, i- it's reducing their take-home pay. This program, if they're in it, i- it's not reducing, they're, they're, they're receiving a substantial allotment towards what product they're purchasing. So it's, it's a savings to the employees on their take-home pay.
You'll receive, as you got received on your seventy-two prior, when you get the each of the, there is a, our, ours, like D D, what they're seeing from our computer, you'll, you'll get one of those intentions as well. It's either gonna come out, the social security side of the fight, or the case of the fire yards, it may actually reduce your, um, total federal taxes paid in, because it's, it's pre-tax, um, money that they're using, so, you know, it's, it's not like it's a total, um, not cost to the employee, the employees, it'll be, you know, guarantee of their career, it'll be paid less than five to eight, so there's gonna be a little bit of a reduction to their life tax, if you understand what I mean? Because their, their quarters are gonna be a little bit reduced by, they're the small value per year. Same way with the income tax. But, but, you know, they don't see, they should not, they should not see any reduction in their take-home pay.
Taxable income will be reduced, which is what their social security's gonna be based on later, so that's why I was worried about the long term.
Firefighters and police officers currently need to want to pay social security.
I, I thought, uh, and you're, you're right, but I thought the ones who went to the new retirement plan, they do, so it's not all of them.
Well, they can, they can all do it, opt in, opt out, but the, the firefighters could not opt in, but they still want to pay social security.
Okay.
In that plan, in the group plan, they have, they have to make the conscious decision to opt in or out.
Right. Well, I'm still in favor of, of offering it to the, to the employees, uh, you know, if, if we need to bring them back in here to, to answer these questions, I mean, I, I think this conversation probably should have been had probably Friday, Thursday, Monday, whatever day, she got to have a discussion with them, but I think they could answer a lot of those questions. Um, you know, I had an opportunity to speak with John, and I, I think he, he provided me with it. A lot of information, maybe more comfortable, but I think we should bring him back in if that's the case, and maybe the next meeting, have it on the agenda, but.
Yeah, I would support that, I mean, I, I think, I mean, I, it's, yeah, it's a different program, I think it's a good program, um, because you never know, you may have employees that would, would want to take advantage of the products they have, you know, whether it's short-term disability, you know, life insurance, whatever it may be, you know, um, at, at, at no deduction from, from, from their pay, um, so.
Is it possible to have, I'm sorry, is it possible to have staff maybe put together a comparison chart of all the different programs, and like, for example, life insurance, you know, mark an X on this one, that one, you know, uh, short-term disability stuff, you know, mark an X on, and where we can kind of see exactly what all the difference is, is between the programs, and if it's redundant to, to include this one, maybe, you know, give us a better idea of where to move forward with, or?
So my position was very clear, I don't have a problem with it, what I, I'm not a huge fan of is forcing an employee to have a meeting, that they feel like they have to participate, and that's, that was where my concern came from, and then, at the very end, like Kim said, then retire, they didn't fully understand what's gonna happen at the end with their tax situation, retirement situation, their money situation, those are the two things I'm concerned about, and you can answer that at the beginning, doesn't mean someone fully understands it until they're retired and they go to do.
Is there some type of legal obligation that says you have to sit down with Baron? I mean, it's.
I think that's just their, their program policy, and I don't agree with that.
Can the employee just say no? And say, I don't wanna sit down with you, I mean?
That question, how opposed to them, in theory, if they said, okay, they, they didn't say that was a policy consideration.
Yeah, and then I wouldn't have an issue if the, if the employee can opt out of the meeting, they can just say, we're not interested, and I, then that's fine.
Yeah, I mean, I think.
But I, I don't think it's a great use of staff time to force an employee to have a meeting.
Well, I guess we just need some clarification if it's forced, you know?
There is, there are some benefits as well, because with the life insurance side, there are benefits, but there is a medical examination required, so it's, if, if, as the city offers this program, it's one hundred percent acceptable, irrespective of your age or your medical, prior medical condition. So if a, if a person is, uh, in their last year, their career year, they just think that they could practice the life insurance policy, that it's not a reason, and we're not concerned about, pay them with them, if you understand what I'm saying?
Mm-hmm, I do, thank you.
Anyone else?
So, so are we in agreement that we're gonna bring them in next week and have this on the agenda? So we can, we can make an educated decision versus putting it on, I, I mean, I'm ready to vote next week regardless, but.
Can I ask a process question, maybe to, that? All the other programs that we have in the city, has it ever come to council to vote on? Cause I don't believe it, so, my question is, why is council choosing to vote on this one, but not Aflac, Colonial, Guardian, and anything else insurance-wise for employees in the city?
I'll answer that, I, I, I think in the past, we, some of those have come before council, and this is a potential substantial savings directly to the budget as well, um, which impacted, which we control and we improve, so I, I think it would come in front of us, and just like any other program that Barrens or their associates offered before, came, came before council in the past.
I thought we don't know if it's a savings or not?
We don't.
Well, might not, or should be, it's a savings, but other than that, I mean, I, I think that's why it should.
Anyone else?
Well, I think at least we, we need to have a, we need to bring it back in, have a discussion, at the least. I mean, I wouldn't mind seating it on the agenda, you know, to, you know, vote up or down, but if, if the, you know, if the will and pleasure of the rest of the council, you know, doesn't feel comfortable with that, then I think at the minimum, we should, uh, at least put it on the agenda to discuss and ask questions.
So you said that they came and you guys met with, who all met, like, all department heads, or who?
No, it was just myself, um, Steve. No, it was just myself, Steve, Tiffy Hyman, and Sherry Greathouse.
I met with them, me and, I met, and I met with them the time before and Annette and a couple members from finance met them the time before that.
That was just his last presentation we did after I was the last meeting.
I would like to second Councilman Hyman's suggestion of kind of a chart of what the programs offer so we can be informed.
The presentation that she gave us, she sent to me so I can send it.
Okay.
I have it.
It's the three six. Yes. So is everybody in agreement that we put this on the next, have them come and speak and put this on the next agenda?
Sure.
Sure. I think that more of the staff feel here as well, like I'm more interested in their opinion than my own when it comes to this.
The staff opinion is that the recommendation was not to implement it in the city.
I guess that's a question that just came up. Is, are council members, are they eligible for any of these benefits, including the other three? Colonial, Aflac?
That's an interesting question because if you have to, that's an interesting question. I don't know the answer to that.
It's all right.
Richard?
I have no idea.
Because of how it works, who pays?
I used to have Aflac and I never had a problem with it. Of course, I'm not, I'm a pretty healthy guy, so I never, you know, I never used it. I was like, I don't need this thing. But anyway, I just, I just thought that would, good question.
No, that, so we had three separate meetings with them and I asked finance to make the recommendation whether we should implement in the city. And the recommendation with finance was to not do it at this time. And that's why it was never implemented. But we will put it on the next agenda.
Well, man, I think we should find out if we're eligible because if you never make it to agenda, if it's something that we can receive benefits around.
Oh.
Right?
No, we just have to vote on it. You just wouldn't, I mean, yeah, get to wait. There's a lecture coming up.
Moving along, discussion regarding the levy ordinance.
In your packet, I put the current ordinance that is in effect now that we currently operate under. This will expire in 2026, so we will put it on the next, or the next regular ballot in May of 2026. State code did change, law changed, you cannot do your own levy election now through the city. You have to put it on a primary or general ballot.
Mm-hmm.
And it's the, the ordinance will show you too what we currently fund out of the levy.
So Ken, this is funny. So on, in that levy, have you calculated in all, any of the, like what the new numbers would be?
Yes.
Thank you.
I didn't think the last one was a question.
The what?
We got it before that. The correct numbers were in the bucket that you all threw in the trunk.
Okay. For section four in here, is that what you're saying?
For the levy and the.
For the proposed levy?
I'm sorry, I thought you were talking about the media.
I wouldn't want me to add anything.
Yes. I didn't know that.
Okay. So are you, are you asking then, or maybe council, do we want to change any use of the levy, correct, or add or delete anything?
Yeah, if you want to make any changes to it before we adopt the ordinance and also if you'll notice the ballots on the back too, so we can make sure that's ordered correctly. And we can share this with the park board too.
Were there any substantial changes between this levy and the one before?
No, I don't believe so.
Councilman Hyman, June 13th, 2020, did you vote for or against it?
I don't know if that's friends of conversation, but, uh, remain rather, but.
I'm just joking.
Got a, got a gotcha moment there, I guess. My question, I got a question about, did we use any of that money for the Walmore in that time?
Yeah, I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
We have some of that. We have this whole one at 50 yet, but probably this is two hundred.
Oh, really? Okay.
Or the elevator.
Oh, the old elevator, okay. I'm good with it being updated just with the new dates and put it on the agenda.
Anyone else?
When's the election? The.
It'll be in May of 2026, but when I looked it up, it says the date's still to be determined. So I'm not exactly sure what the date is up to get with the county on that. We'll have to include that in the ordinance.
Nick, can we, can you find previous years as well? Like the difference, the change of the language or anything or?
I can give you the levy one, this is from the previous years, yeah.
And this will be the special meeting next, next week to vote on?
No, this, no, this, next week's meeting is just to lay the levy, the rate.
Okay, okay.
And this will be on a regular.
Okay. Thank you.
You want to do the previous one?
Oh, yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Moving along, whose favorite discussion is this regarding dog barking ordinance?
His favorite? Dog bark.
Actually, we've had some complaints about this and council member Hal contacting me about it. I looked up some other jurisdictions to see if we can make any changes. For instance, if a dog continually barks for 15 minutes straight, can we say sudden over?
Mm-hmm.
It's hard to quantify, but it is an issue in the city. That's probably one of the biggest complaints we get is barking dogs. I've got one on each side where I live that bark all night long. But I'm, I'm not sure how we can do that because right now it says hispering, unreasonably loud and disturbing noises. That's very subjective.
Right.
So if you put a time limit on a continuous barking.
Yeah.
And someone records it, well then at least there's some proof there. So council could probably try doing something like that if council so wishes to put more strict regulations.
Yeah.
On that.
My, my, my sister's homeowners association in Florida, the, the rule is 15 minutes.
How many?
Fifteen.
A dog barks for 10 minutes and then he stops and he starts barking.
Well.
You're short because now you, you're going to lose out on the night sleep or just the peace and quiet of your house. So, you know, I think, you know, the fact that, you know, being subjective, you know, how often does this happen? You know, does an officer have to go over here, you know, a number of times, you know?
Well, you could, if you feel for it, you could wait and bring it up to code the next day to show that it's continuous. But I think you have to have a reasonable amount of 15 or 20 minutes of continuous bark. I would love it if the, some of our neighbors wouldn't have the dogs barking all night and my kids weren't up till seven o'clock. But again, it's whether council would like.
Well, and I, I think it's a little bit different at night than it is during the day.
Yes. So you could put hours and time, between hours of 10 and 16.
What'd you say?
Unless you work at night and you sleep in the day.
Oh, well, that's true, yeah.
That's true too.
You know, now there are city quiet hours from.
I think it's from 11 till, till 7, but again.
It's as late as 11? I was thinking it was 10.
10 or 11, but it's very, again, it's very subjective.
Yeah.
Like it is with here, it's creating an unreasonably, unreasonably loud and disturbing noises, that type of thing. And that, again, is up to the person who's listening to it, right?
Right. Yeah, I mean, I teach middle school, so like my level of noise is pretty high. And sometimes you just tune it out. So did we, I, I'm, I kind of let my mind drift. I'm sorry.
There's more suggestions in here I wanted to bring to council to talk to if council wanted to put some sort of a time limit on it.
Yeah, when, when I first read this, I thought there's no real way to quantify the problem. And I think if we want to make it enforceable, it needs to be something that can be measured.
Get a decibel meter.
All right, aren't those too expensive? We talked about that about downtown councilmen work.
Well, a decibel meter for dogs, like it doesn't mean they actually have to be loud. It could be the continuous noise that's frustrating to you. But if council is not interested in amending it or adding a clause into it, that's fine too. I just want to bring it forward for discussion.
I mean, I don't really know what the solution is, you know, on this. I mean, I, I think it's just a kind of a common courtesy thing and something that probably just needs to be worked out between neighbors, you know?
That never works.
Old school, I like that little fist fighting.
Sorry, I was raising my hand.
Unless you discourage the dog, that generally doesn't work.
So how, how is this dealt with now? Noisy, noisy dogs? Call the police?
They would call, call code. We generally don't cipher them because it's, it's very, when we show up, the dog's not barking anymore. That's the problem.
Bring it to Carla.
And if they, if it's happening at night, we're not open at night.
But our police are.
I would, I would prefer the police not be bogged down with that.
I prefer to sleep at night too.
So, but is our animal control, do they respond? I mean, like weekends, they're great for random people. I've seen it come and go as they turn the weekends. Let's see what it's supposed to be.
They, they would. He, he's on call.
So what, what are the reasons why he would be called in on Saturday?
Running like dog at large, dog bites, that, that type, those type of calls.
The county expects them to come out for any dog calls, any animal control calls within the city limits. So they're, they would have to pay the overtime for their employees to come out for animal control calls.
So how does the county, what's their ordinance or what do they have? Do they enforce it?
I'm not sure how they do it.
And we don't have an agreement with the county currently right now for animal control on our off hours and we are booking a meeting with the county to try to get an MOU put in place.
So, and I apologize if I missed this. Did you, you weren't, you looked at it for other municipal policies and you weren't able to find anything?
Most of the ones that I, I checked a few in West Virginia were the same as ours. But if you look at a couple other states, they have time limits and HOAs tend to have time limits.
Yes.
Not only, I mean, if it's, you put a time limit and it comes to that individual recording it themselves, we're not really adding it more work for us or more ability to force it because if that video is shared with us, there is proof and we would work pretty quickly, right?
Right, but it's still subjective, right? Because they can go to court and say, well, my dog barked for 15 minutes, but it doesn't bother me and no one else's complaint, so it's not a problem.
The person who's complaining is complaining.
And it has the video, right? Is that what you're saying? Yeah, yeah.
Wheeling has theirs, I kind of like it. It's between hours of 7:00 and 10:00 P.M. So 7:00, 8:00, 10:00 is during the day. Count on bark for 15 consecutive minutes. And then from 10:00 to 7:00 at night, it's worth 10 minutes. So during a given 24 hour period.
And you check, so there you go. So it's not out of the ordinary to.
Right. Yeah, and, and I, I agree, especially, especially at night, it, it's important to keep the peace as much as possible.
And if the dog barks for more than 10 minutes, then what? And let's say at night, the dog's barking for more than 10 minutes, what, what happens then?
Fine, $50 for the first.
They have a fine.
What's Wheeling have a fine on?
They have a separate section, they can then find it. There it is.
Is there a first offense?
Yeah. Or it is about 138.
Well, ours is 50.
No.
What was the second?
And then the second is on the louds call.
So, so how would this be patrolled? I mean, I would have figured, so.
It's complaint trigger.
That's what I'm saying. So if, say if my two little dogs started barking and they, and I got called, someone called on me and, and I was like, well, you know, how can you, how can you prove that my dogs are barking for 15 continuous minutes?
Video of 15 continuous minutes of barking. That's how, that's how I would do it. If I, I would sit there and I would record it for 15 minutes.
Set your phone down, go in the house. What do you do then? It looks like ring cameras and outside cameras and everything.
It's actually not that hard to, in my opinion, to actually quantify if a complaint came in and you were to record it.
I was thinking the law.
But you would have to, you would also have to have video of the dog barking. You just couldn't have just hear woof, 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 you know, in the background. You're like, well, you don't know if that's Fido or that's, or that's Toby, you know? I mean, so, I mean, you would have to. That's what I'm saying. I mean, I, I just don't.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just to council. I got calls and emails about it.
I mean, I get it. I mean, I, you know, something needs to be done.
We had, we had an incident, if I'm not mistaken, a dog was barking and a guy, his neighbor went and threw a brick and hit the dog in the head. Perhaps that will have happened if there were some parameters around that.
Yeah, I mean, because if the dog's inside that other neighbor's house, you won't really hear it that bad. But if it's outside, you could get the video of it. And I think it might make it easier on our dog enforcement or code, animal control. You know, it won't be multiple times going out there and not really be able to do anything. The first time you go out there and say, hey, if you can get this on video, it's quick enforcement for us and it's easier for us to force it. I think it might make it easier on them.
I mean, you have to get the video of the dog and the dog barking.
Yeah.
You know, not just a bark in the background.
Now, if it's bad enough and it's that, I think they will get that. I think they would go to lengths of moving a camera around or doing whatever it is. 15 minutes in the middle of the night, you know, I, that'd be pretty frustrating.
No, I agree with you. I mean, yeah, I support a 15 minute.
I agree too.
Well, I, I, I think that the, the new version of this ordinance should have a 10 minute period for the, for the hour. I think we should model ours after Wheeling.
I'm okay with that.
So that would come to our judge, right? Chief Kiddy, that would have to, that would, our judge would make that, our judge mark.
Yes. So, and go into council, worst statement, you wouldn't have to have this written all on video. I mean, your testimonies, people forget testimony is evidence. I get that argument all the time with, you know, my testimony is evidence. It may not be persuasive as video, but it's still evidence.
If somebody, if somebody claims that my dog's been barking for 11 minutes and the code enforcement comes out and then nothing can be fined and I get cited anyway, or, you know, or the threatening of, or the threat of being cited. anyway, or, you know, or the threatening of, or the threat of being cited, is that something that I could contest? If I, if they, if I had to come to city court, could I say, I request a jury trial, or, I mean, is that, is it possible to avoid?
You can't have a jury trial, you're in prison, but you could have a jury to work that part, who generally is very, even keel and fair about it. And hear you out.
It seems like to me, this is something that if you have a habitual offender, that you would take that to like civil court. You go, you know, i- is that something that would be possible to do, or would you come to the city court to do that? You know, if you got a problem that's been going on and on and on, fines aren't being levied on the offender, is that something that you can take it, you can go courthouse and file?
I don't know what your claim would be then.
Well, I mean, I don't know, uh, stress or, you know?
And also, like, cause you, you wouldn't have advantages on a civil aspect necessarily, you'd match your court. And plus you, everybody wants us to be the adult and the parent. And we see that a lot, I get in arguments with code all the time, I tell them that's a civil matter, leave it alone. But unless, I don't know what your claim would be or how that would go through suing somebody through magistrate. I guess you could tell them, or you could, I don't know what your claim would be.
It was like a dog bite, and the dog, if you put down, it'd have to go to magistrate, right?
Right, but that's a dog bite.
Yeah, I know, I know, it's another.
That's a whole different situation, and there's also damage to the dog.
I just see that if, you know, for, at least from my view, if it's, if it's habitual, that, and there's nothing that can be proved that, you know, if you say the person's just, well, this dog's been barking forever and ever and ever, and, you know, police come out, nothing's found, you know, or, and then you get a citation for it, seems like it's, that's, I don't know, it seems like it's a I don't know, it, it, like, it can't really be, uh, enforced, to me, I mean, I just, I don't know, it's.
And this would apply to outside.
I mean, if the officer responds and the dog's sitting there barking, I, I, I get it, but, you know, are, are they gonna, I don't know, just seems.
And, and, you know, yeah, testimony can't be considered, you know, as evidence, I, I guess, but I mean, testimony can also be hearsay, too, you know, um, I mean, I would think it's something like this, you know, before a judge would, you know, would pass, you know, would pass a judgment on whether to fine somebody or uphold a fine, whatever. I mean, there would have to be discovery and clear preponderance of evidence that something happened, right?
And I think that's, that's our decision to count, and that's up to this judge, where he determines the, the evidence, not hearsay. If I say, I see councilman fourth dog, I'm barking, it doesn't do it hearsay.
Can you tell us the last time this has been enforced at city court?
I have no idea, I'm getting issues. And unless there's an attorney involved on their side, I don't have anything to do with it on that stage. I can count on one hand when we're talking about a ball.
I'd like to kinda see that, if that's possible, Tiffany, if you can maybe get some records about how many times Judge Martin has had issues with barking dogs.
I don't think, I will grab those, I don't think you will, because, again, it's so subjective. Someone will call code, call, shut, the dog's not barking.
Maybe, maybe get a number of how many dog complaints we get on barking, maybe that'll help.
Because I think significantly, uh, recording, that kind of evidence would change the, significantly, so that might change the.
Yeah, I don't, I'll grab those, councilman.
Do you know anything about citations there, Chief? Like, citations for barking dogs in the city, is that common, is that? I would kinda like to see citations issued by, by officers, you know, to see exactly how big of an issue it really is. I mean, eh, don't get me wrong, I can remember my neighborhood, too, it doesn't really bother me, but.
You gotta move closer.
I mean, I got dogs, I got one dog, I got my own dog. I mean, that's why I think it comes back to being thrown to some court about. Don't you laugh, Ron, I know, I hear him all the time, walk away.
No, I, move along, I, we're, we're, we're talking about the dog he hears barking downtown, which belongs to the city.
I mean, I, I'm fine with the fifteen minute thing, that's totally fine, ten minutes, fifteen minutes, it doesn't matter, because at the end of the day, you know, if there's a citation written for it, it's gonna be up to Judge Marks whether or not that, that's gonna be, that's gonna, uh, that, that fine will be enforced, so. Yeah, and it's like our council said over there, legal council, that's not, that's not city council's decision, you know, to, you know, to say, oh, okay, you know, you were written, you know, for, you know, for a dog barking code complaint. Okay, I wanna hear your testimony, your testimony, that's, you know, we're, we're not in that racket, so we're just policy makers, so.
Jury would like that.
Yeah.
In the past, I just sent you four different, uh, noise complaints about dogs, or about animals, two dogs and two chickens. When, when you got a neighborhood chicken crow at two A M in the morning.
Right.
You need a little bit of turn, uh, so my recommendation to animal control would be, even if he gets a video from a neighbor, allow him the opportunity to go out to get his own evidence towards more cooperative with the judge. Rather than saying, here's the video of John's dog barking, it would be our animal control's video to present as evidence.
Right, yeah, and that, and that's, and that's, that's pretty influential, too, when, when it goes to court. If you have, a city official has to respond it, and then they see and they witness it, and they provide that discovery, yeah, it's, it's, yeah, they're, I think it, yeah, holds a little more weight, I think, so.
Okay, moving on, discussion regarding trash can ordinance.
So, a couple council members wanted to discuss this, we do have a couple proposed amendments to take care of the clock, to take out the clause that you have to cover them or build a structure.
Yep.
And to change the language to, so we do want you to remove the bins off the street, off the sidewalk, and where possible, and on your property out of sight, but we understand that some properties, it's simply not possible. But we do want to keep the sidewalks and streets clear, cause it is a liability for kids.
Yeah, and I, and I support, I support that a hundred percent, you know, the public safety aspect, I support. The aesthetics aspect with, it's gotta be a covered storage or a cabinet, you know, that's, that's a little much. Um, the, the other, the other thing, too, I, I think that needs to be taken out, like in subsection C of uh, bind fifty-eight oh three, uh, where, where it does say, um, except one place upon, okay, okay. When it goes down here, it says, uh, except one place upon for pickup pursuant to section five oh eight point two, which just kinda just describes, you know, the times that you could, you could put the trash can out and the times that you need to take it, you know, you know, take it back, you know, into your, onto your property or into your yard, well, not, not your yard, I guess, but out of sight. Um, it does say, um, it says, uh, it says garbage cans, dumpsters, which I think dumpsters should have its own separate subsection, because, because if you read further down, it says, in similar containers are not to be stored in front yards. I don't think people are gonna store, permanently store dumpsters in their front yards. I mean, you could put another subsection with that that talks about dumpsters, and you could add front yards if you want. Um, I wouldn't do that, front porches or in public view, I think public view needs to be taken out, too. It's a public view on a regular basis, cause I could be, I could be walking down an alley, you know, and, and I could see someone's trash can behind their house in public view.
Okay, so we can change that wording then?
Yeah. I mean, I totally understand the public safety aspect of it, yeah, they, they need to be off the sidewalks, um, after, you know, during, during the times where you, after the trash picked up, they need to be off the sidewalks, I totally agree with that. This is the aesthetics part I don't really agree with.
We'll make those changes if council wants to make any more, but I think those were the main ones from the, that we heard from the public anyway, was building a storage container for it, so, uh, we'll bring those back next council meeting.
Number nine, discussion regarding potential amendments to council comments.
What's that mean, that amendment to council comments?
So, af- after the last council meeting, there was, I, and I can't remember which council members were asked to put this on the agenda for the work session to, I believe, somebody wanted to not have council comments to limit time on council comments, so it's on a group of councils discussion.
I was in favor of getting rid of it, I think if we follow, you know, robust rules and, and the parliamentary rules, if we, we discuss what's on the agenda, we have our opportunity for a discussion during that. Um, I think going back and just continuing it, I don't think it's very productive in any way. Uh, Chief Kitty's always in fall asleep over there, so I would feel bad. When I start talking, he's always like, oh, man, um, so I was cut short for him.
Well, now they're gonna make sure that I don't barks all night.
Oh, yeah.
What do you wanna do, a three-minute time limit?
I, I mean, I don't think it's necessary at all, but I, I don't, you know, I don't see the importance of it, of re-saying what we've already said if you're really following.
I see some, I see some. I, Vice Mayor Riffle, I, I disagree, I think it's a, I think it's a time for us to, to speak to the public and to ask questions to the city manager, um, in, in a public forum, um, you know, again, uh, as I've told members of council, I think one of the things a council, council member should do is ask questions that clarify issues for the, for the public, and I think if there is something that is, um, not on, not on the, uh, agenda, but is pertinent, you know, I, again, the trash can ordinance was, is an example of that. When the, when that post was made and it kicked up all that, that, that dust about it, it wasn't on the agenda, but it got us talking about it, and now we're making, now we're making, uh, changes to it. So I, I think there is a place for it.
I mean, but, I mean, if we're adding this work session once a month as well, I think that could suffice there. And also, in the past, I have seen certain, I mean, you can go out, you can sign up for public comments and go speak to council just as everybody else would, um.
Like me as a council member?
Yeah.
To go speak to the camp?
Yeah, I see, I'm not, I think, and you've done it a few times, I think I've seen people, uh, do it, uh, if it's an issue, picking up these kind of speaking, I mean, and I don't know, and I don't know whether like in our charter or like, so, we don't want to speak about things that are on the agenda, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
You can't, you can't get into a discussion that's likely to lead to official stuff, which, which is where the, the line always gets sketchy, but basically, if Councilman Dean brings up project A, and then Councilman Worth goes next, he shouldn't start going, oh, yeah, I like that idea, we should talk about that later, then you guys are starting to do your discussion on that. So that's always a concern about that, is somebody early in the council comments brings up some other issue and everybody else jumps on it. This council doesn't tend to do that, I will say that, your council comments almost always just relate to what you talked about that day. But that's what the concern is, somebody says something and someone jumps on it, then the next person does, so then you have this whole conversation.
And it's not so much about this current council, I've been on another council over the different times, that it got pretty, uh, ugly during council comments, um, and if, we've seen even here recently in our state, just north of us, that, you know, we're opening up opportunities for us to not really be professional, be, uh, straight to the point. I, I think that we could be discussing motions or things like that in our comments. Um, now, I agree with you, speaking to the public, I, I completely agree, uh, I, I think a lot of the things that, like the manager report, I think that speaks to the public a lot, and I think it's, you know, with these work sessions, I think that gives us that opportunity, um, it's consistent, you know, do it once a month, uh, if we do that, it works against the plan. But I, I think those are the times that we're able to bring that up.
Let me take a, 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 a straw poll.
Well, well.
Yes or no, for council comments?
Yes.
Mark?
Yes.
Yes or no?
Yes or what?
No. Martin?
What are we, yes or no in two? He, he, here would be my thing, I, cause I think, I, I believe, just.
Can I, will you finish my comment, yes or no?
Abstain.
I, I would have to abstain, too, I would probably refer that question to our legal counsel to see if we can even take a straw poll during a work session.
On something that may be, that may be, uh.
At the end of the day, you've had this argument of what, what you can do during work sessions, that my position of work sessions don't exist. There is no such thing as a work session, a special meeting, you can't take any official action now, but other people said, you can't take any votes during a work session, even though a work session does actually exist, because there is no such thing as a work session. If you look at the Open Beans Act, so I think your better course of action is to simply discuss the matter and get to have a rough feeling for each other what you want to do, so don't do a straw poll.
Okay.
That's a lot to say, because taking it all the time, because, again, work sessions don't exist.
Well, we've done them in the past.
I know.
I, I'd like to add some input before, you know, just give it a blanket yes or no, but, uh, you know, I think it, honestly, the council comments, any type of rules that the board wants for meetings, whether it's the agenda or, or even dress code, uh, for that matter, that should be voted on or done in the first meeting after swearing in July one, that's when that should be done.
Like a rules package?
Yeah, it's basically, that's how that would be done, I mean, that's, that's my interpretation of it, that's how it should be done, in my opinion. Uh, I don't think we should get rid of council comments, so.
You think we should limit the time on it?
Yes.
Uh, it should be no, no more than five minutes, cause that's what the public gets, so.
I'm sorry.
It should be no more than five minutes, because that's what we allow the public, so, that's, if, if that's the case. But again, I think that should be done, uh, when the, I guess, in the first meeting that the board meets after an election, or after a swearing in, rather, it should be discussed then, along with other things, and that's, should be the rules going forward for the next two years.
Thanks, Mayor.
That's just my take.
I mean, I just, I, I think it's, we're straight to business, if we're getting things done, we stay on the agenda, we move forward, um, we don't get off track. We stay professional, we stay to the point, uh, and if we don't open up ourselves for legal, uh, actions or things like that, if we actually discuss something, there are council comments and a citizen that may or may, may not benefit from that, they could bring that to us and say, hey, you guys spoke about that, I knew one of you said that you, you agreed, you liked that idea, and I just, you know, uh, and also, you know, two, two years ago, it was bad, it was very drama, it wasn't, it wasn't efficient, it wasn't business. Uh, we're up here to be business, we're up here to get stuff done, um, and I think a lot of times it opens us up and it, it, you know, the public will be, anything negative, the public will eat that up and I just wanna get to business and get stuff done.
How about five minutes, and it's your choice whether you wanna make the council comment or not? You can always abstain if this is a pass.
I think five minutes is too, I mean.
Five minutes is too long, you probably get the public to speak.
Why, we've been talking all, the whole meeting, the discussions, and it's five minutes.
I mean, that, that's, that's fine, I mean, me personally, I mean, I, I'll kinda echo a little bit what, you know, Vice Mayor Riffle said. I, I've always believed that you, you know, council comments should stick to, you know, what was on the agenda, you know, maybe why you supported something, why you didn't, that you couldn't discuss during a motion in a second, you know, um, but, yeah, I mean.
Yeah, but council always informs the public, Italian festival, Black Heritage Festival, First Friday.
And I, and I think that's fine, and, and that's, and that's something innocent, you know, I mean, you know, I mean, I, I don't think that, you know, the ethics commission's gonna say, well, you know, shame on you for not sticking to the agenda and informing the public the Italian Heritage Festival is this weekend, I don't think they're, you know, they're going after that, but I, I think it could get out of control, you know, if we're starting to, you know, come up with ideas and stuff and, and, and deliberate and feeding off of one another, so I think it probably should just stick, stick straight to, to the agenda, you know, the agenda items, and maybe just announcements of like things that are going on, you know, in the community, that, that would be my, my recommendation.
Manager's report does that, you know, manager's report says, you know, Italian Heritage Festival coming up this weekend, um.
Yeah, but she doesn't read the whole, uh.
But I mean, but I mean, like, events like that, that we're requesting it to be spoken about.
Let's just leave it as is. We're all elected officials. If you don't like your voters, vote the person that you don't like. Right? I mean, if you're talking too much, get, I mean, we're all elected. You're, you're here to say what you're supposed to say, when you want to say it. If constituents are telling you something, you want to relay the message.
That's why I'm bringing it up. They're saying that.
Well, quit talking.
I've been cutting mine down a lot. Four teeth kitty.
I mean, I guess i- if it's an item on the agenda, is it possible? And this is maybe a question for, or somebody, but I mean, if, say, Jerry says something which I don't agree with, I mean, is it possible to interrupt? I mean, if it's an item on the agenda, if it's a discussion item, I mean, it, it seems like it should have its own, I, I, obviously does have its own section on the agenda, but maybe, maybe we're going about it wrong when it comes to that. Maybe it should be somewhere else on the agenda item. Maybe it should be before the meeting.
Well, we're talking about two different things, right? I, I, I believe the council comments that's on this to discuss is the last item on the agenda. We're not talking about. Right, that's totally different.
And, and I think it comes down to the, the fact that, you know, I know Annette prepares the agendas for us. Uh, but as council, I believe we have the opportunity to put council comments in or, or not. And I, you know, I, I know the way it works is the agenda is kind of a, I know some people might not like a living document, but, you know, I, I think, you know, if, if we don't want council comments on there, I think we have the right to say, no, we don't want them on there. But obviously it comes up to our decision as a body, which comes back to the fact that maybe we should be setting some type of rules, board rules after, after the election to say, okay, well, you know, we're going to have five minutes of council comments, uh, for the next two years.
When, when is the chair, you know, of the meeting, which I guess would be the mayor, when, you know, with, if, if the mayor runs the meeting, then certainly I guess it'd be the mayor that would call you out of order if you were talking too long or whatever. I mean, I don't know, I mean, it's just.
Oh, yeah, but I, you know, that's, that's embarrassing. I mean, I don't want to say Jerry.
You can have two seconds.
You have to do it that way. I'm just saying, you run the meeting, so.
I think the, the, one of the biggest concerns I have is if somebody says something and, you know, you don't agree with, or you find to be libel or slander or, you know, something, you know, it seems like that opens the door for, you know, if I, if I don't, if I've already spoken and then Jerry comes next and just blasts me for whatever, I mean, I'm, I'm going to be furious. And rightly so, I mean, it's.
Another council member should not blast another.
Well, I mean, I think at that point, if since it's an item, I think we should have the ability to, to stop him or by vote. Or he's going to call it out, be a dilatory or whatever, you know, it's like, you know, I don't, I believe you're out of order for saying what you're saying. But right now, okay, you know, you could say that too. I mean, well, I mean, literally, when it comes to me, I could just say motion to adjourn and end the meeting. I mean, that's how, that's how Robert's rules work. So, I mean, I don't know. I think we're kind of, we're, again, we're waiting into the buck here.
I guess last thing I was going to say, three years ago, we had probably been unanimous on the yearly council comments. Now, we're, we're not that type of council, so we keep it respectful and we keep it. But I'm thinking about, you know, the future and, but if it comes down to it changes, it could change every time. I mean, I guess they could put it back on there. I mean, I don't, another council could. But I get what you're saying, you know, you're setting up there, just set the process after the election. I mean, I, I like that.
Well, again, I, I think it comes back to the point where if you would, if I was, if I spoke and I gave a, you know, amazing report on things that were going on in the city and then you came on here and called me everything under the sun negative, and I'm, I'm sitting here like, why, what can I do then? I have no, I, I can't come back at you until after the meeting and say, why'd you do that to me? I mean, if, if that's the case, if it's an agenda item, I believe I would have the right to say, you're out of order, you know, or, you know, or even take it further than that. I mean, I don't know, but again, I don't want to waste our time here, so I think we can move on. And maybe.
Okay, if you don't want, let's just leave them on. If you don't want to talk, just pass. No, I can't talk, so I recommend.
Go back to the dog warnings.
All right, I'm saying on paving, patching of city streets.
So council, in the budget, we have a paving, uh, line item every year, $300,000. After discussions with, uh, Public Works and Sanitary and our project director, we are going to be paid on patching streets this year, potholes, but we are going to escrow probably most of the money because of the water board projects. Now, this isn't an effort to make sure we're not using funds in an inefficient manner. So we have a 17-year road replacement plan for the city that needs to be updated. We're looking at updating that to a neighborhood plan. But what we don't want to do is repave any streets when they're going to be tore up in the next three to five years because of what the water board is doing. So we want to make sure that we are organizing how we're repaving our streets to be the best use of taxpayer money. We are not going to, um, do anything with the money in the budget. Like I said, it will be escrow and it will continue to build up, but we want to make sure we're using those funds in the most efficient and effective way possible for the paving program in the city of Clarksville. And the water board project touches every neighborhood in the city.
Does it touch every street?
No, but because we're going to a paving, neighborhood paving program, and what that does is it saves for moving equipment from like Adamston to Broad Oaks, and that actually does cost quite a bit. So as we transition, we'll repair the potholes. If anything's really bad, we'll replace it. But it's an effort to make, to see more bang for the buck, really, seeing more done for taxpayer dollars. Um, so when that paving plan is complete through Public Works, our project director and myself will bring that to show council. Um, and again, we're not going to shorten the budget on any paving money. We just want to do the best job of the tax service that we have.
That sounds good.
So wha- what's the total amount in the paving budget right now?
Was it 450?
500,000.
500,000.
So that's like three years of non-paving, almost.
There, there was not.
No, every, every year, that's what we put in.
I know. No, I'm saying there were some years that we didn't do the paving at all.
Uh, I believe.
We have a timeline. We did it. It was just different months, so it seemed like that, but.
Johnny had switched when we were putting up the bids for paving, so there was an overlap of one year. Or two years, it's how.
I think it was two.
Two years, maybe?
I don't think we spent it every year.
Changes we go.
I believe we did it every year, just one year. We didn't pave in the fall. We waited until the spring, which may have seemed like it a while ago.
Okay. Thank you.
That was just an update I have for council.
Can we get, can we notify the public in some way when we finally do get the neighborhood thing out? I mean, that, or that's.
Yes, we will be putting that on, in, on social media and on the website. We just found a company to redo the website after the final bids. We also have a communication person starting on the 16th. So you'll see a significant change in what we're putting out to the public. When the website rolls out on our social media newsletter, uh, you'll see consistent messaging over all the venues.
But first we have to wait for the water board to give us the list of what streets they're going to tear up.
We have it.
We have it already.
Yeah, and now we're working on updating our paving plan according to that. So we're doing, like I said, the neighborhoods in conjunction with the water board to figure out how we're going to move forward.
Call for adjournment?
Real quick. No, seriously, this is serious. But, but I, can, can we get an update on the tow yard, uh, Monticello? I, I, I mean, if we can get that expedited to, I mean, that thing is becoming a nuisance. I think it needs to be dealt with.
They call, they call fire, right?
That's the old Welch plumbing, isn't it?
Yeah. Tow, yeah.
Do you want to know who owns it?
No, I want to know when the hell we're getting it out of there.
Is it, is it Eden Condon? Is it Mark Condon?
It has to be.
Last year, the year before, someone had, I was told someone had bought it off the auction. But I don't know if the sale actually went through, but I'll find an update and send it out to council.
I mean, if it's condemned, the sale, the sale, the auction doesn't clean that out. So I, I, I mean, yeah, if we can get it down, let's get it down. It's a nuisance. Sorry.
Second.
Third.
I was, I was moving on the move, motion to adjourn.
Oh, make that a motion.
Rip second?
Second that.